Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kay, could you call the rule?
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbach.
Here.
Leontis.
Here.
Phipps.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Sam Perdito.
Here.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. We're going to change things up just slightly tonight because we have a few special recognitions that we're going to take care of right away. So, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm grateful for the opportunity this evening to conduct a couple of very special presentations. First of all, it is with really great pleasure that this evening we formalize the resolution that council considered and passed earlier in January. And this is a resolution honoring Mayor Edwards for his service to our community. I was grateful for the opportunity of Mayor Edwards' retirement ceremony that was held at Simpson Garden Park. And actually, the ceremony was so well attended it overwhelmed the fourth ward with parking concerns. It was a great opportunity for many members of our community to gather and honor Mayor Edwards and thank him for his service to our community. So, this evening, we just wanted to make this formal. There's a lot of words and a lot of whereas is on here. I'm not going to read them all with all due respect, Mayor. I was thankful for the opportunity to read them at your ceremony because the words are meaningful. They chronicle your career and your level of public service over a great many years, and we are certainly thankful. But I do want to read the meat of this, really, the very end of it. And this is the resolution that was passed unanimously by City Council. And it ends by saying, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, that the Council of the City of Bowling Green, on behalf of the government and the citizens of this municipality, do hereby thank and commend Mr. Richard A. Edwards for his dedicated public service, distinctive achievements, and distinguished performance of civic duty, and hereby designate him Mayor Emeritus of the City of Bowling Green." So it gives me great pleasure to present this resolution to Mayor Edwards and publicly thank him for his service to our community.
You are. Do you have words?
I think I wore out my time on December 16th. I was surprised you didn't give me the hook then. But, Mr. President, members of council, and Mr. Mayor, and all assembled here, thank you so very, very much. And I wanted to say what a joy it's been to work with all of you. And of course, our wonderful staff here, with headed by Lori. And it's just been a thank you so very, very much. And I think I'll just cut to the quick right there because you've got lots of important things here and some recognitions and promotions, and I appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor Emeritus Edwards.
Our next presentations are of great importance. And this is, it gives me a great deal of pride and pleasure in giving the oath of office to two members of our fire division. I must say that the gentlemen that we are administering the oath to today have demonstrated an unbelievable level of commitment to their craft. They have worked for years to prepare themselves for leadership within the fire division. We should all be proud of what they do, how they commit themselves to this community, their level of training, their level of achievement in their training, their level of commitment to this community. And I think perhaps most importantly, as is demonstrated by the attendance this evening, the members of their commitment, their leadership. They have demonstrated their strong leadership and their willingness to lead. So we're very thankful for the opportunity to promote Terry Bush and Dustin Baumann this afternoon, for this evening. So Chief, I think we're going to do, I'm going to ask Chief Mormon to join me, and Lori Tretter, our safety director.
Chief, this is probably one of the part of my job that I absolutely love the best, to recognize two individuals that have worked hard for their entire career to get to where they are here tonight. With the, all the hard work, the commitment that they give to the citizens of Bowling Green, the sacrifices they make to their families, missing birthdays, missing Christmases, they've worked really hard to get here, and I'm truly proud of both of them. So I'd like to call on Terry Bush and Lisa, his wife. Please come on up.
Terry, good evening. How are you? Nice to see you. Thank you. Terry, I'm going to ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Terry Bush..."
"I, Terry Bush..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to do my duty..."
"To do my duty..."
"...as fire captain for the City of Bowling Green..."
"As fire captain for the City of Bowling Green..."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the State of Ohio..."
"The Constitution of the State of Ohio..."
"And the laws and ordinances of the City of Bowling Green..."
"And the laws and the ordinances of the City of Bowling Green..."
"I will protect, safeguard, and preserve life..."
"I will protect, safeguard, and preserve life..."
"Health and property..."
"Health and property..."
"Against fire and other perils..."
"Against fire and other perils..."
"And faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And faithfully discharge the duties..."
"Of the position to which I am appointed..."
"Of the position to which I am appointed."
Terry, congratulations. Dustin, good evening. How are you? Dustin, I'm going to ask you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Dustin Baumann..."
"I, Dustin Baumann..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...to do my duty..."
"To do my duty..."
"...as fire lieutenant for the City of Bowling Green..."
"As fire lieutenant to the City of Bowling Green..."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my ability..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the State of Ohio..."
"The Constitution of the State of Ohio..."
"And the laws and ordinances of the City of Bowling Green..."
"The laws and the ordinances of the City of Bowling Green..."
"I will protect, safeguard, and preserve life..."
"I will protect, safeguard, and preserve life..."
"Health and property..."
"Health and property..."
"Against fire and other perils..."
"Against fire and other perils..."
"And faithfully discharge the duties..."
"And faithfully discharge the duties..."
"Of the position to which I am appointed..."
"Of the position to which I am appointed."
Dustin, congratulations.
At this stage, I'd like Terry and Lisa to come back up here, please, and take a between Dustin and her there. I would actually like for all the family members of both Dustin and Terry to please stand up. I said before that it takes a family to get through this career. I mean, and that's so true. The commitment that they have not only to the citizens of Bowling Green, but their family is committed to Bowling Green also. They miss out on birthdays, they miss out on Christmases. These guys sacrifice a lot, and their family is there to support them the entire time. They couldn't succeed at Bowling Green Fire without their families, without the support of their families. There's just one other thing that I would like to give you guys. You'll notice the different colors in these helmets. When they're a firefighter, they have a red helmet. As they get promoted to lieutenant, it is a yellow helmet. And captains and above get the white helmets. I know that both of these guys are going to wear this proud. I know they're going to serve for their community well in their leadership roles, and it gives me great pleasure to present these to Terry and to Dustin.
Okay, we can take a seat for a few minutes?
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Yes, before we leave, I don't know if the council, would I ever say something? Meet our two newest officers. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Approval of the minutes from our meeting on January 21st. These have been distributed. You've had a chance to look at them. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. The minutes are approved. Correspondents? Kay, do we have any correspondents?
Yes. Distributed to you prior to the meeting is a listing of budget transfers for the month of February from the finance director, and those transfers require your approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay. What else you got?
I also have a, that was distributed to you via email on Friday, and also there's a copy in front of you, is a board and commission appointment requested by Mayor Osbacher. And that appointment is for, to the Board of Public Utilities for Andy Wagner for a term ending May 31st, 2024. And that requires a motion for approval.
Is there a motion to approve Mr. Wagner's appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this? No? Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah. All in favor of accepting the appointment?
Aye.
Aye.
And oppose, same side. All right. Welcome aboard, Mr. Wagner.
That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. So that will bring us to lobby visitations. Has anyone signed up?
First person is Tony Vetter.
Tony, you know the drill?
I do know the drill. Hi, everyone. I'm here on behalf of Wendy Chambers. My name is Tony Vetter. I'm the director for downtown Bowling Green. Wendy Chambers is the director for the Convention and Business Bureau, who is in charge of putting on a celebration this coming weekend in Bowling Green, Winter Fest. And I just want to mention a couple of things and make sure that the public is all invited. It's been cloudy for how many days now? So we're going to see if we can bring a little light into that. Couple of things new for this year. It's actually just not Saturday. It is also Friday. So that's big news. The tent will be set up over there on Clough Street or across from the Heimson Bank. It's actually going to be 20 feet bigger this year, so it's actually going to be more space. And that will be on Friday night, right after the chocolate crawl. That will be open, so they can go right from there to there. And if you want to know if you can still buy tickets for the chocolate crawl, you cannot. They are sold out. So they always sell out early, and they sell a lot of them. So just a couple of really quick things. On Saturday, so we have a party Friday night, then Saturday morning, the ice sculptures will arrive. That starts at 10 o'clock for the public to come and look at those. We created a relationship. We're surrounded by the agriculture community. And this year, we wanted to, for the celebration, to show the appreciation for all of that. So for the live demos, it's going to be some sheep, some horses. I know a combine will be involved. So we've got some challenges for them for carving, especially the combine. I think that will be a challenge. But they're going to be doing that as a live demo. And then we have other demos this year. It's more kids-related this year. So it's not necessarily just going to be the logo of the business that's supporting it, because we're going to recognize that in another way. But it's going to be holdoff. Okay? So bring your kids. And we're going to have the castle from the Frozen movie there also. And snowmen and snow globes, and all kinds of things related to winter activity. So please bring your kids during the day, and then find a babysitter, and come in at evening and night, and come to the tent and enjoy yourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Victor Coleman.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Victor Coleman, 6099 Holland, or Angola Road, Holland, Ohio. My name is Victor Coleman. I am with First Energy. And I just wanted to stop out tonight to put a face to a name you might have heard or not. But I am your external affairs representative for the area anywhere that First Energy is in your territory. So if you have any issues, Mr. Mayor, or council, I would be your direct contact to help to get that resolved for you, as it pertains to First Energy. And I can leave my business card with you guys and all that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we have the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinette.
From the Finance Committee, we have an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the supplying and cleaning of uniforms for the Public Works Department and Utilities Department.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
I have a number of pieces of legislation. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2020 through 2023 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas. I have a resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal or proposals and/or an application or applications with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contractor grant for the fiscal year 2021 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311, funding for capital and/or operating assistance and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal or proposals and/or application or applications approval. I have a resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract to provide fire protection outside the incorporated limits of this city. I have a resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division five-year strategic plan. I have a resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division standards of cover for 2019. I have an ordinance accepting an easement from Mauer Rentals LLC and dedicating the property for right-of-way purposes. And that's all I got.
I didn't apply, John. Official reports, Mr. Mayor? I have no report. I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have. Are there any questions for the mayor? Thank you. Next, we have Planning Director.
I have no report unless you have questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Taylor?
Miss Lori.
Oh, I skipped Lori?
He's just going to the ones that don't have a report.
Lori, you don't have a report. All right. Well, while we're at you, are there any questions for Ms. Taylor? Okay.
Good evening. I am going to pass around to you something I recently received from our sustainability coordinator, Amanda Gambi. She was summarizing our 2019 refuse and recycling report. Find it in my papers here. And members of the press, we will get you copies of this as well. I do want to share with you a few statistics, highlight a few things that Amanda has put in here. In 2019, the city's overall residential waste diversion rate has been calculated at 40%. To give you context, this compares to a national average of 34%. In terms of some specific areas in which we are using refuse and where we're doing recycling as well, you'll see on here listed that our 2019 tonnage was 5,078 tons. We had 611 scheduled pickups and picked up 98 mattresses. And if you're wondering why I'm doing this and not Brian Kraft, he can certainly answer questions about it. But Amanda works out of my office, and so that's why I have this information. But Brian and I are a team, so if he needs to step in, he will. In terms of recycling, we recycled 687 tons. This is what was picked up at the curb side. Now, this is where we have a little bit of a challenge. The national average rate for contamination is 15%. We were slightly over that here in Bowling Green at 15.38%. That is something Amanda Gambi, our sustainability coordinator, has been working on very aggressively. She will have to, she will certainly have her work cut out for her, and she is continuing to do an excellent job. Hopefully, you've seen some of the materials that she's been sending out, and you are following her on social media and so forth. We did record 1,183 tons dropped off at the 24-hour drop-off center. We do not know how many of those were Bowling Green residents, but certainly, we know some, many of them were. Just as a reminder, as part of our recycling program, we do recycle many things, including brush that is picked up on scheduled routes. And the tonnage of that was 385. We do want to note that the brush is delivered to Wood County's yard waste recycling facility and is then ground into mulch. So even though, yes, it's going to the landfill, that's a myth. I know Amanda works at a spell. If it's not going in the landfill, that's just where they're doing the operation to get the mulch. And then residents are able to purchase that mulch from them. We also have listed on there information about leaves and yard waste, Christmas trees. And we always want to put a reminder out that we have an app called the Recycle Coach, and that provides updated information for folks. We are also replacing the educational items on people's garbage cans. And again, hopefully, all of you received our mailing recently talking about the new recycling program. So since Amanda got us those details recently, we wanted to provide those to you this evening. Have a date for your calendars, and that is Wednesday, March 18th, at 6:00 p.m. That is the time that we have scheduled. We've talked, council last year, in putting its priorities together for the Community Action Plan, asked that we schedule an education session to discuss tax increment financing and the opportunity zone that's located in Bowling Green. We are working with the Montrose Group to present an educational opportunity for you. So again, that is March 18th, 6:00 p.m. at the Simpson Building for the education session. We note that Kristen is absent this evening, so should you have any questions for Parks and Recreation, I can try to take them as well, with any other questions that you may have for me this evening.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tretter? I have one question.
Sure.
You mayor, excuse me, may or may not be able to answer this. With regard to this contamination, is there a possibility that now we're, that we're accepting more different types of items than we did in the past, that that might just naturally lower the amount of contamination? Or is this specifically stuff other than items that aren't recyclable?
I don't know, Brian, if you're able to answer that or not. We may want to pull Amanda in to answer that.
That's fine.
But if during your report, if you feel like you can come up with something. Yeah.
Okay.
It will certainly be an interesting statistic to watch, though. You know, it's helpful that we have this consolidated data, and that, you know, a year from now, we can stand here and put the two side by side and certainly see if that is impacting it. And there's other data that, of course, Amanda tracks as well, as part of her decision.
Okay. Any...
Lori, this might be for Amanda also, but the 15%, then that's blue bin contamination.
Correct. That's in our curb side, yes.
So they're separating, they're weighing it apparently before, or they're just comparing the truly reusable recycling versus the waste? And that's 15%? Is that correct? Just make sure I understand that number.
Right. That's correct.
15%. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so, Hotley is not present. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh.
Oh, my God.
Are there any questions for Mr. Marsh? Utilities Director?
There are four questions.
Are there any questions for Brian?
Will there be a utility commission meeting or board meeting next week? Yes. Okay. If we cancel, of course, we set up the email, but my current plan is right now is that maybe yes.
Okay. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Well, on the contamination issue, I think we see it as all sorts of things. Yeah, there were people that were throwing glass before. Not so much because over 10 years, I think we kind of figured out. But most what you see is bagged materials. It could just be bagged trash. And a lot of times, when we knock on people's doors, it would just be their mistake, they didn't know, or didn't care. And even those recycled materials that was bagged, you know, that got thrown out, too, and that's counted as, you know, contamination. So I think once we get, the biggest thing about do not bag, throw it in all loose, comangled. And now that we're taking in the bottles, I think since we have added extra things, I think maybe that number should go down. And always, we'll keep the education part going, where we talk about the don't bag items, no shredded paper, and sorts of things in there. And I think it's just always going to be an education thing, like this day after. But I'd like to think the number next year would go down just because of things we have increased. So I'm going back with education all the time. Ask me a question. Yeah? I have a question. So we take that, our trucks drive it up to Republic? Okay. And we do that once a month, or once a... A couple times a week. A couple times a week. Yeah. Yeah, because we have two trucks out doing recycling each day. Most of them can get through the first, and most, if not all, the second day. So that truck will go up while they're in a different truck, continuing the route on that Wednesday and Thursday. So a couple trucks. They stagger that. Yeah.
I have just a comment. I've heard nothing but good things about it since it's been as far as the things they take. I really thought people would complain more about the cost, but no, I'm just hearing that people are just so happy that they can take so many things, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, and I think at the end, it's going to be interesting to see what the tonnage difference is now that glass goes in, how that affects both sides of the equation. That's somewhat related point. Brian, every once in a while, I'll be driving around town, and I'll see a garbage can with, like, your branches sticking out of it. And, you know, I know it's optional, and people can, you know, throw away whatever they feel comfortable with. But do we communicate with them and ask that they do something more responsible? That example is a low-hanging fruit. If our driver sees that, obviously, they won't pick that up, and they'll get called in. And then we'll reach out to those people, get them to know us about you cannot put brush into the trash, and make them aware of the right way. Now, with four brush collections a year, starting in April, there's really no reason to be doing that at all. So, yeah, that's just another thing we do. Great. So those will not be picked up? That's correct. Yeah. Anybody that's got a branch sticking on top of the garbage can, I mean, that's just a, that's the obvious, don't pick that container up, and we don't. So then that's part of the education part of it. And most people fix that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kraft? Thank you, Brian. Okay, Council Committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
The Transportation and Safety Committee met tonight at 6:00 to discuss primarily two items.
two items. One was to name a member of the committee to the sidewalk commission, and then the second was to roll over a list of, and construct a list of priorities. There were a number of priorities that were discussed, including streets and sidewalks.
That was very brief, thank you. Any other reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
Just an update to, a small change to the Finance Committee. I'd originally scheduled a meeting for the March, the second meeting in March, but I'm changing that, after speaking with the administration, realizing that the bulk of what I hope to accomplish at that meeting is to discuss first quarter financial numbers. And I'm going to move that meeting to April 20th, so that the first quarter is closed, and the staff has time to compile those numbers, and we can better review them in April. So the meeting will be April 20th at 6:00 p.m. That's correct, Kay, that's great.
Is that in Council Chamber?
Yes, in Council Chamber.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Yes, Mr. President. Tomorrow night, we'll be having our second meeting of the Community Improvement Committee as we explore the topic of should Bowling Green have a rental registration or inspection program. Tomorrow night is going to be a public hearing, so there'll be, you know, little comment from, from the committee members. Two individuals have been invited to the meeting tomorrow night. Police Chief Mormon is graciously coming.
Sorry, sorry, Fire Chief.
Sorry, Chief. Chief Mormon is.
I'm just going to go with Chief.
Chief Mormon will graciously speak to us, as will Rodney Fleming, attorney to students on campus. I'd also like to see if there's anyone else that would like to address us tomorrow night as people come to meetings, perhaps to speak. But to my two committee, fellow committee members, I wanted to see if we could try to shoot for about a 6:15 ending tomorrow night, so Laurie can go home to dinner, but just wanted to throw out a little parameter on the meeting.
And that starts at 5:00 here in Council Chamber?
Yes, it is 5:00 tomorrow night.
Any other reports? I would just like to make a couple of announcements. There will be a joint meeting between City Council and the Planning Commission, and that will occur on February 11th at 6:00 at the Simpson Garden Building, and that's to discuss the zoning code study that we've been looking at. And then the other one is, there's a strategic planning session for City Council on February 15th at 1:00, and that meeting will be here in Council Chambers. I believe that is all I have.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Isn't appropriate for me to get a date on the calendar at this point for zoning planning and economic development committee? Is that right? Is that, this is the appropriate time, correct?
Well, you can get with Kay instead of the time, anytime you want.
So it does not need to be in this form?
Well, you might as well do it.
Kay? All right, so, do we, our next, the 18th, there's already a 6:00 meeting?
That's correct.
Uh, okay. So, you know what, if we can do this all by email, we'll just do it by email.
We can, or I can tell you that March 2nd is available, if you want that.
I don't think I would wait that long. So let's, I'll, well, you can do this by email. Thank you.
All right, well, then we'll have a committee announcement to make next time.
Yes, good.
All right, so that takes care of committee reports. We have the reading of legislation. Kay, could you lead us through the reading of the legislation?
Legislation for first reading, resolution number 3755 for first reading, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, to file a capital and operating plan for the years 2020 through 2023 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized area. Ordinance number three, no, resolution number 3756 for first reading, resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 U.S.C. Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2021 Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311, funding for capital and/or operating assistance and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Resolution number 3757 for first reading, resolution authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract to provide fire protection outside the incorporated limits of the city. Resolution number 3758 for first reading, resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division five-year strategic plan.
You'll need to unlock your.
Resolution number 3759 for first reading, resolution adopting the Bowling Green Fire Division standards of cover for 2019. Ordinance number 8825 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the supplying and cleaning of uniforms for the Public Works Department and the Utilities Department. Ordinance number 8826 for first reading, ordinance accepting an easement from Mauer Rentals LLC and dedicating the property for right-of-way purposes. Legislation for second reading, ordinance number 8819 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio. Ordinance number 8820 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for the calendar year 2020. Ordinance number 8821 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state of Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase and/or lease of vehicles, equipment, and completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes. Ordinance number 8822 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for lime slug disposal services. Ordinance number 8823 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to accept a utility easement from David C. Mauer. Legislation for third reading, ordinance number 8817, third reading, ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8817.
Second.
Okay, ordinance 8817 has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President? At the last meeting, I raised some questions, and I distributed the questions to you, and I also raised those with the administration, and I sent the responses, which answered some of the questions. And I want to say I'm not, I like airplanes, I like airports, I'm not opposed in any way to the continued operation of our municipal airport. I'm simply asking whether we can work with the Airport Commission to develop additional streams of revenue currently, as was explained in the email that was sent to me, but also confirmed by the budget information which I obtained directly from the airport. The main source of income is the sale of aviation fluid, which they're able to do with a 20% markup, so they can earn about $100,000. And then the rest of the funding comes from $30,000 from us, $30,000 from Wood County, so some people are being taxed twice for that, and then also some money from the university, which I think is about the same. So the question I asked, and I asked at the airport, was whether there was, there were any takeoff and landing fees, whether the users of the airport pay at all, other than for destroying their airplanes, and that's the hangar fees, but in terms of people who fly in and fly out on the same day, whether there was any. And I learned that there wasn't any, there weren't any takeoff or landing fees. And that puzzled me, and I've talked to a lot of people living in Bowling Green, you know, most people don't actually use the airport, it's a pretty small group of people. And people were surprised to hear there were no landing and takeoff fees, given that it is, we live in an age where we're being charged for just about everything. I go to the community center, I pay $8. When the kids go to the swimming pool, they have to pay something. So the question is, is that sort of a historical thing? We've never looked at that? Does it, is that something that we could just ask the Finance Committee perhaps, or some, again, I'm new, so I don't know which committee would be the right one for us to take up, and this would be for next year. I'm not trying to stop anything now. And we could just explore with the other funders of the airport, whether some revenue stream could be developed that involves, it might require some capital investment, but I understand the FAA provides funds for that. Last year, they provided $150,000 for new airport lights, so perhaps an automatic billing system could be, I don't know what it costs, but it could be a possibility. And so anyway, that's, that's where my questions I've asked have led, and I'd just like to bring that to consideration, and then see if there's some way we can kind of get that ball rolling in an appropriate way, and I don't know what the proper mechanism would be. Do we just ask the Finance Committee to look at it, or do we, in a motion, or?
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like there are a lot of unanswered questions out there. I don't know if you want to see what you can find out about that, and then we can see if it's something that needs to be submitted to a committee.
You're talking to me?
Yeah.
So tell me what I need to find out.
Well, I don't know. What questions do you not have answered?
No, well, I think I answered some of the questions, but I think it's, it would be appropriate for some city, some council committee, this would be the right one, to take it from this point on and work with the proper groups to get, like, the airport initially, the administration to give answers, and then also to propose some possible, possible ways of moving forward. Again, with the idea of securing additional revenue streams to make the operations more secure, so they're not having to constantly come up to governmental bodies like ours.
Will you do me a favor and remind me about this on the 15th or?
We could take it up on the 15th, sure.
Excuse me, if I could just interject. In terms of your question, in trying to influence policy, I think it's important that you realize that they have, I think that, yeah, those questions would be best directed to that board that dictates or determines their operations. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that they do have a board.
No, no, that was your friend at that board. I was referring to, I mean, I said commission, I meant the board.
Just from my own knowledge, do we have, do we have a member that sits on that board? Okay. All right, well, it sounds like a good place to start would be with their board.
Well, I think you raise good point, Mr. President, and that is that we could discuss this at our, at our planning meeting. And if this, if this council thinks that this is an issue that needs to be further developed, we can find a way to craft the questions in the form of committee and make sure that the questions are forwarded to the appropriate authority through the administration. I don't, I don't think we have enough information to make any decision, but.
Certainly, certainly not at the moment.
No, and I, but I do think the first step would be to discuss it and decide whether, where this fits into our list of priorities, and how to, how to get the answers to the questions that you're asking. And I'm sure we can resolve that at our planning meeting without much difficulty.
I'm sure there's a lot of history behind this too, as to how this board decided to fund itself over the years. I think we need to learn before we make any decisions.
Is there any more discussion on ordinance 8817? Kay, could you call the?
Hollenbach?
Yes.
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zampardino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, ordinance 8817 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8818 for third reading, ordinance amending and adopting Section 91.18B of the codified ordinances of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding indigent burials and amending and adopting Section 35.70 regarding city fees.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8818.
Second.
Okay, ordinance 8818 has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Kay, could you call the rule?
Leontis?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zampardino?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbach?
Yes. Ordinance 8818 is adopted. Is there any other business to come before City Council this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We are adjourned.